Meeting of the governing body. I call this meeting to order. You will give your attention to Councilwoman Hiller for the invocation. Stand as you are able and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to introduce to everyone Carissa Miller. She has been the Associate Pastor at Topeka's First United Methodist Church at Sixth and Topeka for two years. First United Methodist Church is 168 years old here in Topeka and seeks to be good for the good of the city in all that they do. This June, Carissa was ordained as an elder in the Great Plains Conference of the United Methodist Church. She's married to another United Methodist clergy person, Cameron Miller, who's currently pastor at Silver Lake United Methodist Church. Carissa is currently leading her church through a community listening process. Throughout the seven-month process, she and a team of congregants are conducting various listening activities, interviews, focus groups, observations, et cetera, with organizations and people who live, work, and/or lead in the downtown area. The church is doing this in order to better get to know their neighbors, their gifts, their needs, dreams, and concerns, so that they can better incarnate God's love to them and work with them to bring positive transformation to our community. Carissa is passionate about this work and is excited to see what comes of it. Carissa?
Okay. Thank you very much for having me. Let us pray. Loving and holy God, we thank you for this night. We thank you for any of the business that is before us, and we pray that you would guide each person here throughout the night, guide the conversations that are had. And, Lord, we just pray that you would be present in this space, that people would feel you here, that your will would be made known. Lord, our community has so many beautiful things going on in it, and it also has many complex challenges. Thank you for this body of people who have devoted so much of their time to trying to solve those issues or at least address them. Lord, please bless them, continue to uphold them in their work, give them courage to be bold. And, Lord, guide us all as we try to make Topeka a place that's more like your kingdom, a place where all experience the joy of life and are thriving. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the roll call. Brenda?
Mayor Padilla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Valdivia Akala?
Here.
Ortiz?
Emerson?
Here.
Kell?
Here.
Nager?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Hope?
Here.
We have nine present with Ms. Ortiz absent.
Ms. Ortiz is here.
Oh, sorry.
I just couldn't get off mute.
So we have 10 present.
Move on to item number two, the appointments. Brenda, please read.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Mark Braun to the Civil Service Commission to fill an unexpired term ending August 15, 2027.
Okay, we've heard the appointment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilman Kell, second by Councilwoman Hiller. To call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
And Kell?
Yes.
We have nine yes. Motion carries.
Motion is carried. Mr. Braun, would you please stand so we can recognize you and thank you for stepping forward to serve the City of Topeka on the Civil Service Commission? Okay, agenda item number three, the consent agenda.
A is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinsted designating a portion of the Crosby Place parking garage as temporarily exempt from the provisions of KSA 41719D and TMC 91502E. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Hannah Nager granting First Congregational Church an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at Seek concerning noise prohibitions. C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting Topeka United an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at Seek concerning noise prohibitions. D is approval of the core and auxiliary team members to work with Brianna Silver on the innovative solutions to address the growing unshelter crisis in our community. E are minutes of the regular meeting of August 8, 2023, and there are no applications.
Okay, we've heard the consent agenda is read. Is there a motion to entertain? Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Dobler, second. Second from Councilwoman Ortiz. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
And Nager?
Yes.
We have 10 yes. Motion carries.
Okay, motion has been carried. We'll move now to action items for A. And as I understand, Madam City Attorney, I will need to read this admonition for ex parte before we move forward.
Yes, everyone will have to disclose ex parte before you take a vote, but you could read it at whatever time you would like. Now sounds lovely.
We would like to move on this item. I want to ask everyone to consider the following. Prior to proceeding with the vote, each member of the governing body who has engaged in ex parte communication with any individual either in favor of or against the matter being considered must state that that communication occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged in the communication, they were able to fairly, objectively, and impartially consider the measure based only upon the evidence provided on the record. The record includes the staff report, commission minutes, the testimony provided at the March Planning Commission public hearing, or similar relevant information related to the matter. So I ask now, are there any ex parte communications to bring forward? Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Thank you, Mayor. I have had texts, support and against, emails, support for and against, information that we received as a governing body that have expressed where they are on this, and I feel that I can make a fair, objective, and impartial decision.
Further, this is from the governing body. Any further ex parte? Excuse me?
I just hope my mic is working there.
Any further ex parte? Councilman Duncan?
I'll just repeat everything that Councilmember Valdivia Akala said, and I still believe that I can make an impartial decision. Thank you.
I'm not sure exactly what the legal boundaries are here, but I think we've all had ex parte and parte and weeks of communication, and I feel like I can make an unbiased decision.
I think that we would all be able to say that we have received those communications and still are able to make a decision based on just the record. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too have received emails, phone calls from proponents and opponents, and I can make a fair decision. And we've also had some, the gentleman that's been coming forth and bringing stuff as well to the meetings, so, and I can make a fair decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you need to read the item, please?
A is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinsted amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850 050 of the Topeka Municipal Code on property located east of Northwest Rochester Road, approximately 300 feet south of Walnut Lane from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to PUD Planned Unit Development with M2 Multiple Family Dwelling District uses to allow for multifamily residential duplexes and fourplexes on approximately 7.2 acres.
Thank you. City Manager? Governor, governing body, you're familiar with this. I think it's been on every agenda since I've been here. There has been a valid petition filed on that, and what that means to you is that you have to do a super vote, and that's eight, right? Eight in favor or eight against?
Eight in favor, six against.
Right, eight. There you go. So, I think, pardon? Dan has a presentation for you. Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, governing body, I'll get through this fairly quickly. We'll put on just process, just a reminder where we're at today and how we got here. Planning Commission held and closed a public hearing on this item on March 20. The Planning Commission voted eight to oh to recommend approval to the governing body. Protest petition was filed on this item. Governing body voted on May 2 to remand this item back to the Planning Commission to address four issues that were identified by the governing body. And then Planning Commission considered this item again on June 26. PC considered the issues discussed and asked questions before recommending approval of their original recommendation. So just a reminder again, this PUD is to allow duplexes and quadplexes for a total of 30 units on the property. Existing zoning on the property is R1 single family. Proposed zoning is PUD with M2, so multiple family district use group. I've mentioned this before at the governing body, but there's been a citywide housing market study that was completed in 2020 that identified a need for a variety or diversity of housing, including duplexes and fourplexes. This missing middle is what that's known as, is a gap in Topeka's housing market. These building elevations are for one of the proposed structures. You can see here the proposed structure will be one-story, gabled roofs, and garages. So one of the issues identified by the governing body was character of neighborhood. So the staff report contains an analysis of character of the neighborhood. I will note that character pertains mainly to physical characteristics of the existing neighborhood and the proposed development. Some things to point out here by the PUD master plan that's addressing these issues, again, the design plan, single-story, one- and two-bedroom units with garages, modulating building facades and gable roofs, again, limiting to 30 units, which is a residential density of 4.2 units to the acre, which is less than the density that's permitted under the single-family zoning for the property currently. And the buildings are oriented rear-to-rear with the existing residential development north of the site. We showed a number of these examples of development throughout the city to the Planning Commission. We're only going to show one here for time, but this is 21st and Wanamaker. What we're showing here is the M1 zoning with a adjacent, immediately adjacent to the single-family zoning. So it's a rear-to-rear relationship with that duplex zoning with that single family. And again, there are a number of instances of this throughout the city. The next issue is connection to Sproton Lane. So the owners and residents north of the subject property oppose this connection to Sproton. Per fire code, a development that's limited to 30 dwellings is allowed a single point of vehicular access, and in this case, it will be from Rochester Road. There's no need for a second access in that case. And also, the subject property does not abut Sproton Lane or Walnut. We need for a traffic study. So city traffic engineering staff determined that a traffic impact analysis is not required due to the limited traffic volume generated by this proposed development. More particularly, the traffic does not meet the thresholds of the TIA per the applied guidelines. Estimated traffic volume, estimated peak hour volumes, and traffic volume from the proposed development do not meet the standards. And in fact, the traffic volume is going to be about 4% of the current traffic volume on Rochester Road. Since we met last, we've learned that Shawnee County has plans for a project to improve Rochester Road in the, starting around 2029. That would be a three, if everything fits, a three-lane section with sidewalks, storm sewer gutters. And finally, stormwater drainage. Flood hazards are mapped by FEMA, and FEMA's flood map is what we use for local regulatory purposes. Development restrictions apply to the 100-year flood lane, flood plain, and also the flood way. We do not have development restrictions for the 500-year flood plain. Subject property is not located in any mapped flood hazard area. Staff consulted with the drainage district for this area, who also confirmed this information as well. One thing to note, if this project's approved or any other project on this property, it will have to comply with the city's stormwater requirements through an approved drainage report during the subdivision phase of the project. So it will have to meet stormwater requirements if it's developed. And that's all I have.
Okay. Further consideration from the body? Councilwoman Valdivia Akala?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go over just a number of things back from the May, initial May 2 city council meeting. I had gone back and watched it a number of times and was, picked out some issues that had resonated with me and also as I've continued to look at this PUD development. During the course of the meeting, it looks like a number of colleagues came up with different concerns. There had been the concerns and questions about the traffic study. Planning had stated that the impact study was not required. My understanding, though, is that the area that was picked to have this count done on how the traffic was flowing was actually one that did not, that was not right there, central to where this development is going to take place, and planning can confirm or deny that. The area that is, that I don't think the numbers came out of was one lane each way with no turning lanes, no sidewalks, or traffic lights. And I think it was also confirmed that there was no plan by Director Copley for the CIP future for Rochester Road. I think it's nice and handy that we put in there since the last meeting that the county has said that something may be on the works for Rochester Road in 29 or 31, between 2029 and 2031. After having sat on this council for less than four years, I know how quickly projects can change, especially when we're looking at the dollar amount. So I do not think that that should be taken as fact. Councilmen, there was another councilman that asked why there was no single-family development since that area was zoned as such. Planning stated that there was concerns of long rectangular shape and only one access point through Rochester. Yet, we seem to be trying to force 30 units, more people, more traffic, more cars with this development. So that seems to not make a whole lot of sense to me. Also, there has been, we keep hearing that this particular area is not in the flood plain. If there is one thing out of this whole PUD plan, it is the concern I have with it not being in the flood plain. I understand now at, you know, that we're in the, you know, the final throes of this, that, you know, drainage requirements will have to be adhered to, but we also cannot discount the photos, and I do not think the Planning Commission may have received these photos, I don't know, is the photos that were handed out that showed the concerns of flooding in actuality, that showed flooding in two different times in less than 27 years, 1995 and 2005. This was done after Soldier Creek Levy had already been constructed. I understand that it's not in the flood plain, but it's very troubling to me that there has been no effort for a flood plain reevaluation, and I don't profess to know all the ins and outs of this. There has been no concerted effort to have a reevaluation with the traffic study, and it may be a little bit dubious on how that study and where it was actually done at. And to me, this shows almost a disregard in a myriad of ways. So we're also looking at the traffic study, as I stated earlier, and the concern at that time that was brought up by a different councilman about adding on to that, well, is there any emergency analysis that has been done because there is concerns about parking on both sides of the road and how that can hamper emergency vehicle equipment? And I guess we say this is supposed to be senior housing, and I would think that that would, an emergency analysis would be something that we would have looked into, but there was none. And it was brought up by this councilman that, you know, parking on both sides and elders would be living in the area, and was told by the planning commission, the planning department, that a lot of neighborhoods were like this. A lot of neighborhoods had vehicles parking on both sides of the street. To me, that is apathy and disregard. Also, we talk about the missing middle, the final reference about addressing the missing middle in senior housing, both brought up as the needs from the 2019 housing study. The missing middle is already occurring in North Topeka. An example of this would be the Woodland Park at Soldier Creek. And also, when it comes up with the senior housing, the planning department has already stated that they can do nothing to ensure that this will be senior housing because it violates the Fair Housing, the Fair Housing Act. So I think that, you know, kind of propping these up as, here, look, we're doing this, I think is also a bit disconcerting that it comes in the final hours. I think more than anything, what bothers me about this is the flooding possibility, the traffic issues, the Planning Commission not coming forth on any changes or any suggestions at all with the serious questions and concerns that this council had. And because of that, I'm going to, out of the, out of the selections that we were given, options, I don't know how many options there were given, five or six, I am moving for option three, which would reject the commission's recommendation, meaning the rezoning will be denied, where a minimum of six votes is required. And I move to make that motion, Mayor.
Before I entertain your motion, I want to make sure that everybody understands the options that are available before we move into that voting and motion opportunity. There are three voting options. One is to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation to rezone the property. Two, to amend the Planning Commission's recommendation to rezone. And three, to reject the Planning Commission's recommendation, which is deny zoning. Those are the three options that we have. Before I entertain your motion, is there any further comment to take? Councilwoman Hofer?
I just wanted to say, I am probably the only one, or close to the only one in the room, that saw this back in 2006, and I voted to make it residential one. I still think it should be. It is in the middle of residential, all the way around it. Soldier Creek buffers it to the south from the commercial, and I'd like to stick to the nature of the neighborhood and stick to residential, so I'm going to be voting against it.
Did you hear that?
Is my mic not working?
No.
Okay, I'm going to vote against it because I believe it should still stay residential one.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. If we're doing some comments, I will vote for it. The proposal ahead of us, in front of us, is for residential. It is for only 30 units instead of the 40 that the R1 density allows. The design is very compatible with a single-family neighborhood, and not only, as the staff said, you know, fits our plans and what's happened in a lot of other areas in town. So, thank you.
Seeing none further, Mr.? Councilman Kell?
I think very similar to what the Councilwoman Hiller said there. It's, you know, it's, we're fighting for housing in this town, and architecturally it looks similar. We have, my neighborhood, I don't look as a one block as a neighborhood, I look as the area. We already have other multifamily dwellings in that area. So to me, it's not taken away from the neighborhood, per se, but I'm definitely, I believe, in favor of approving the Planning Commission's proposal.
Okay. Okay, now, I'll entertain the motion that Councilwoman Valdivia Akala made. If you would like to repeat it, ma'am, or the clerk can repeat it.
Permission is to reject.
She makes a motion to reject. It will take a second. A second by Councilwoman Hofer. If you'll call the roll.
Councilmembers Duncan?
No.
Hofer?
Do you have a question?
I have a question.
Why does your vote mean, exactly?
If I'm voting yes, then I'm rejecting it.
You're voting just to reject it?
Mayor Padilla?
No.
Councilmembers Hiller?
No.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
No.
Emerson?
No.
Kell?
No.
Nager?
No.
And Dobler?
No.
Okay, we have eight yes with, or sorry, eight no. Councilmembers Valdivia Akala and Duncan voting yes. The motion? Hofer. Hofer voted yes, not Duncan. Okay, we have eight no with Valdivia Akala and Hofer voting yes.
Correct. And?
Motion fails. Motion fails, yes.
Motion failed. Okay. So, Council, I mean, City Attorney, do we entertain now an emotion to approve or amend, or does it automatically get rejected and the zoning is changed?
You would need to vote to change the zoning. It requires eight votes, so a motion would be appropriate at this time if someone would like to make that.
Yes. Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I had some questions for Mr. Warner. So, Mr. Warner, something I hadn't picked up before, and maybe it was in here before, and I, well, probably wasn't here, and I just overlooked it, but by limiting this to 30 dwellings, they don't have to connect onto Sproton Lane. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And they're limiting it then to 30 houses, right?
Correct.
Okay. By rights, by rights, they could develop more than 30 houses here, and that's allowed under existing use without any action by us?
Quite possibly, yes. And then, if they had more than 30, they would have to make a connection, a secondary access point.
And they would be connecting to, is it Sproton Lane?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my second question is, it looks like under PUD, they are limited, they're somewhat of a sketch of what the building is going to look like, the, I guess we call it the elevation of the building. Under just the residential, what would, what would be the parameters on what they could build there?
City of Topeka doesn't have design standards for single-family residential, so if it was, if they just pulled permits, did a subdivision plot and pulled permits under the R1, we would not review design.
Okay. Okay, and how many, I'm sorry, Mayor, just one last question. Mr. Warner, how many, how many could they fit in here? I mean, how many could they, are they allowed to build under R1?
I'm not exactly sure. It depends on the connection. It depends on the connection. It's more than 30, I would say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warner.
Councilwoman Hiller, did you have your hand up?
No.
All right, so we have two options. One, to approve the planning commission's recommendation to rezone the property, or two, to amend the planning commission's recommendation to rezone. Is there a motion to entertain? Councilwoman Hiller.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Hiller. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Kell. If you'll call the roll, please.
Okay, councilmembers Hofer.
No.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
No.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
And Duncan.
Yes.
Okay, we have eight yes with councilmembers Valdivia Akala and Hofer voting no. The motion carries.
Motion's been carried. We'll move now to action item 4B, if the clerk will read.
B is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinstedt in accordance with section 186010 of the Topeka Municipal Code, approving a conditional use permit to allow for the enclosed parking of passenger vehicles and light-duty trucks on property zone D1 downtown district and located at 1,000 southeast Quincy Street, all being within the city of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
Mr. City Manager.
So, Mayor and governing body and public, this resolution has to do with asking you to approve a conditional use permit to allow for the enclosed parking of passenger vehicles and light-duty trucks on property that is on D1. Now, that means it is in the downtown district, so it is located at 1,000 southeast Quincy Street. I think the recommendation has been for you to approve it, but we will let Mr. Warner address this with you in more detail.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, governing body, CU 2303 is DT garages. This is a CUP for enclosed parking, storage of vehicles. The property is already a parking lot. The issue here is, you know, zoning's changed in this area, it's D1 now. Any new parking of this variety requires a conditional use permit, so that's why we have this today, even though what he's doing is enclosing some spaces on an existing parking lot. The comment about self-storage not being permitted is correct. Staff is recommending approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval unanimously. The conditions of the PUD address such things as building orientation, the composition of the building materials, and setbacks. So here you can see kind of the elevation of the garages that will be facing more or less Quincy, the garages will back up to Monroe. And then, again, staff's recommending approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any question for Dan? Okay. This item also requires, to reveal any ex parte communications, so I'm going to read this and go around and ask. Prior to proceeding with the vote, each member of the governing body who has engaged in ex parte communication with any individual either in favor of or against the matter being considered must state that the communication occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged in the communication, they were able to fairly, objectively, and impartially consider the measure based only upon the evidence provided on the record. The record includes the planning commission minutes, the staff report and its attachments, the public comments made during the planning commission hearing, and similar relevant information related to the matter. So I ask now the governing body, is there any ex parte communication to reveal? Councilman?
Yes, Mayor, I think we got, I think we all got a email from the applicants, but nevertheless, I can render a impartial decision.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller.
I've been aware of it along the way, but not involved in the process, so I think I'm fine.
Well, I'll give that admittance, too, for myself. Aware of it, but not involved in any direct communications or anything. Anyone else? Okay. Having read that ex parte communication comment, I'll now entertain a motion on this item. Councilwoman Hiller.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Hiller. Second by Deputy Mayor Dobler. If you'll call the vote, please.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Hofer.
Yes.
We have 10 yes, motion carries.
Motion's carried. We'll move on now to action item 4C. Brenda, if you will read.
C is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinstedt prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of aggregate principal amount of $89,385,000, combined utility revenue bond, series 2023A, of the city of Topeka, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance of the issuer making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Mr. City Manager.
So, Mayor and governing body, again, this is $96 million in bonds. It covers Polk Quincy Viaduct utility relocations for water main or meter replacement projects, two stormwater projects, eight wastewater force main or pump station projects, and they have all been previously approved or authorized in the CIP process. And what you might also need to know is that the city is applying $6.9 million in utility cash reserves and utilizing $89 million in bond funding for these projects to fund and remainder projects. So with that, we'll have Rochelle go over with you the good news we got today on bond interest rates.
Yeah. Rochelle.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and governing body. We are extremely pleased to announce that we received nine competitive bids on this bond series, which is an all-time high that we have not seen in the last five to 10 years. So the most competitive bid came in with a true interest cost of 4.23%. The spread between the top bid and the high bid was only 22 basis points. So that tells us this was a very competitive sale. The winner was Robert Baird. And tonight in the audience, we have utility staff, finance staff, as well as Sevyn Callen with Gilmore and Bell, and Caitlin Dwyer with Columbia Capital to assist with any questions you might have.
Sevya, thanks for being here also. Any questions on this item? Councilman Duncan.
So, how much of this is for Polk Quincy?
20 million is for Polk Quincy.
So 20 million, this is even though it's 25 in the back?
That is correct.
Okay.
We, we're bonding what we need now, and then we have the opportunity to bond a little bit more if we need to next year. We just want to make sure that we're only taking what we need at the moment.
So what do we think that is going to eventually become?
What do we think that's going to?
Yeah.
The jury's still out on that, so we're looking forward to seeing what these bids come back on these separate projects that we've split out.
But at this point, it's safe to say it's going to be more than the $20 million we originally thought we were going to put into this project.
Correct. However, we are working very closely with KDA as we bid these so that we can meet requirements to be eligible for assistance. So we're hopeful that we can get some assistance to pay for overages.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions about the bonds themselves. I just want to point out for everybody, while we're looking at these, that on the third page of your handout, it shows the amortization schedule, the debt service schedule, and even at what for many of us is still a very low rate of 4-point-something or other for these bonds, that 89 million that we're bonding is going to cost us 160 million to pay off. It's incredible how costly this is, and just want to, the numbers are almost so big, it's hard to comprehend. Just to use that as a refresher to all of us to congratulate staff and the planning that we've been able to do in moving stuff to cash, because every dime we spend on interest and finance charges isn't going into streets and sewers, and so on. So, thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Councilwoman Valdivia Akala.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, can you just tell me again, the 20 million is in here for Polk Quincy, and then the rest of it is for what? I missed it, sorry.
There are four water main or meter replacement projects, two stormwater projects, and eight wastewater projects that involve force mains, pump station, other lining and improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Hofer.
Rochelle, are the bonds callable early?
We do price our bonds with a five-year call term every five years so that we have the opportunity to take advantage of interest rates should they drop, which for the past decade, the city has been very successful at. Right now, in this current rate environment, our entire portfolio is lower than what we're issuing new in the market, so we've captured most of that interest rate savings as it stands now.
I'm just thinking, if we would have good times and have extra money, could we call the bonds in early and pay them off with cash if we would have it?
Yes, I believe we could choose to do so, but at a call date. We couldn't arbitrarily in between call dates choose to do that.
At a call date, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Further questions? Motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Dobler, second by Councilman Kell. If you'll, please call the vote, please.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
And Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
We have 10 yes, motion carries.
Okay. Motion's carried. We'll move to action item 4D. Brenda, if you'll read.
B is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinstedt prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of aggregate principal amount of $89,385,000, combined utility revenue bond, series 2023A, of the city of Topeka, Kansas, previously authorized by ordinance of the issuer making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor and governing body, back on the last discussion, and this is an oversimplification, so I know that finance is going to take deep breaths here, but what you also need to remember on those bonds is at some point, they're callable, which means that if you have good financial discipline and you have the cash bonds to do it, you can actually pay those bonds off early and save interest down the road. So that was an oversimplification, right? So, there you go. This next item simply is that if you approve this ordinance, it will set the parameters for the sale, and I would again turn it back over to finance to walk through that with you.
Rochelle?
Good evening, and this is the same set of projects that previously approved by the ordinance, and this is the resolution, and that again, that confirms and sets the bond sale. So happy to stand for any additional questions you might have.
Any questions? Motion to entertain?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Kell.
Second.
Second by Councilman Emerson. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hiller.
Yes.
We have 10 yes, motion carries.
Motion's carried. We move to item 4E. Brenda, if you'll read.
B is approval of the 2024 Social Service Grants Committee recommendations.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, governing body, I will turn this over to the Honorable Councilwoman Ortiz.
Councilwoman.
What is he talking about? Because I've only been here a few years, so. Sorry, I was looking for my notes. We've had some good meetings, and we were able to find some money, and we also would like to add some more money to next year's budget. I'm going to let Mr. Brett Martin get his money's worth, get our money's worth out of Brett, and let him say a few words before we vote on this. Brett, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for the opportunity to share. As I mentioned in last week's meeting, we didn't have any issues with the process this year. No changes recommended for the process. We did work with the committee and with city staff to find additional dollars to be able to grant, and so as a result, following the appeals, we were able to invest in two more programs fully and partially one program. So as I mentioned last week, the process for this is taking the score, multiplying that by the amount requested, and then going until all the dollars are exhausted. And so then, the amounts you have in front of you are what we recommended to the committee and were approved by the committee.
Mr. Mayor, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve so we can move forward. Thank you.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, second. Councilwoman Hiller, if you'll call the vote, please.
Councilmembers Ortiz.
Yes, absolutely.
Emerson.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
And Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
We have 10 yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz, I want to thank you, the members of your committee, for your work in bringing these recommendations forward to the governing body. I appreciate your efforts and also that collaboration with Brett Martin. So thank you again, ma'am.
I'd like to thank them, too, with all the technology, the in and out, but we got through all the meetings, and Brett was there to move us forward, so I'd like to thank them as well.
Thank you. We'll move back to action item 4F. Brenda, if you will read, please.
F is approval of an amendment to contract number 49772 between the city of Topeka and Teamsters Union Local Number 696.
Mr. City Manager.
So commissioners, this is the Teamsters contract, which they've requested to reopen, and you approved that we reopen that and have discussions. I believe we've come to an equitable agreement, and I want to thank our labor representatives, the Public Works Director, and our legal staff for being a part of this, and we got through it with a minimum amount of discussion, and this is the product we're bringing to you tonight.
Thank you.
And the Public Works Director, I believe, has some comments.
Mr. Copeland.
Thank you, governing body. Just as a reminder, what we're bringing in front of you is an amendment to the existing contract. I'm at a critical spot right now in terms of staffing. Of my 40 street maintenance worker positions, I have 16 that are vacant right now. Additionally, I've not been able to fill a night shift, which is a critical part of my operations, to be able to do events like sweeping and pothole patching on very busy arterials, to be able to safely do that. I have two representatives from the Teamsters Union that are here. My heartfelt thanks to them for their working cooperatively to come to an agreement, both in terms of wage increase, that will actually give me an opportunity to be competitive in terms of hiring people, as well as to implement a third shift, which we're going to do through a shift bid, so this will be a nighttime shift, and that will have to be a mandatory in terms of five workers on that. And so Pat and Mike are here, I'd like to... to do through a shift bid, so this will be a nighttime shift, and that will have to be a mandatory in terms of five workers on that. And so, Pat and Mike are here. I'd like to thank them for their assistance in terms of the vote of ratification was unanimous. So, with that, I would gladly stand for any questions that the governing body has.
Any questions? Councilwoman Ortiz.
I don't have any questions. I just would like to make some remarks. Braxton, I'd like to thank you and your team for everything that they're doing. You provided me with a little note that said they've been working four weeks straight, very hard on picking up all the limbs and debris from the storm, and I will be supporting this. And if there's anything that I can do to get the word out, just let me know, because I understand how crucial those positions are. But again, I wanted to say thank you, and I will support that with that. I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion to approve, second by Councilman Kell. Any further discussion or comments? Councilman Kell.
I just wanted to sit there and say, if anyone knows anyone looking for work, as Mr. Copeland said, there are 16 open positions, and this is one of our biggest complaints that we hear from our constituents is our roads. So, you know, we're trying to be competitive here with our area, and hopefully, we can get these positions filled as fast as possible.
Further? I'd like to add compliments to Braxton and to the union stewards and participants who helped bring this to us in a quick fashion, and I like, I really like the idea of that shift bid, getting some work done sometimes in the cooler time of the day, in the evenings, and keeping that continuity of effort. So, thank you all for who participated in this. Councilwoman Valdivia Akala.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say that, to me, this is a win for the workers. It's good to see that the city is getting to where it needs to be, to pay fair, decent living wages for our municipal employees, and I hope that we continue to do the work to get everyone up from the lowest entry position on up to get parity, to get more equity, because a living wage is important in the times that we are in, and the worker is just as important as the director. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, second by Councilman Kell. If you'll call the vote, please.
Councilmember Emerson?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yeah.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
And Emerson. I mean Ortiz.
Whoever.
Get them out of my chair, yes.
That's the problem. That's 10 yes, thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, motion's carried. We'll move to action item 4G. Brenda, if you'll read.
G is approval of a real estate purchase agreement between the City of Topeka and Craig A. and Sarah E. Brook in an amount not to exceed $55,500 for property located at 400 Southwest Philmore, Topeka, Kansas.
Mr. City Manager.
So, Mayor and governing body, Utilities Director Davis will take you through this discussion and why we need to buy the property.
Director.
Good evening, governing body. We covered this last week in executive session. I am willing to stand for any questions, but a brief overview, we've been working with these property owners since June of 2021, when their private sanitary sewer main collapsed. They have been attempting to work with neighbors to get easements, to do the needed improvements. That has not panned out as they would have hoped, and as we were looking at what it might take to extend that sewer service on behalf of the city, it just made more sense to, economically, to purchase the home.
Questions for Councilman Kell?
So, in essence, it just means that it was cheaper for the city to buy this property than try to actually run the sewer line to the property?
Correct.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that everyone watched and understood that better.
Yes, thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a really tough situation in our central Topeka neighborhoods. We have folks that are on maybe as many as three houses on the same lines, and it's very unfortunate that this one wouldn't work out. I really appreciate all the work to try and help the family as well as the House. I'm happy to move to approve, moving this forward.
Motion to approve is second by Deputy Mayor Dobler. City Manager, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmembers Kell?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And Emerson?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, motion carries.
Motion's carried, we move to action item 4H. Brenda, if you'll read.
H is establishing a public hearing date of September 5, 2023, for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed City of Topeka 2024 operating budget, setting the maximum expenditure limits, and authorizing the publication of the public hearing notice.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and governing body. Here's what's important to know about this. What this does, once you approve it and publish it, is set the upper limits to the budget. And that means when you come back to your public hearing, which is scheduled for September 5 at 6:00 PM, you can't increase it. You can't increase those limits. You can only leave them the same or lower them. So, again, what this in essence does is publish and say to the public, these are the upper limits of the budget we're looking at for 2024. So, your finance team may have some other things to add.
Not bad.
Ready? Quit playing with the microphone.
All right, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a notice of hearing regarding the property taxes is a formal notification sent to property owners to inform them about the upcoming hearing meeting related to the property taxes. So, these notices typically issued by all government entities and tax authorities and provides just important information about the hearing, the dates, the time, the location. So, the purpose is to just provide the information to the public, so property owners may have the opportunity to present their case, to ask questions, and to provide any input. So, I will pass it to, you want to spend on it? Adam? Can you talk about one?
So, the only thing I'll add is what is going to be published is what we've been presenting in the budget. So, the way that we report it in the state, sometimes the funds look different than normal, but just wanted to reassure you that what we have been presenting through this budget presentation is what is going to be published in the newspaper.
Questions for Adam or for Fred? Councilman Duncan.
Just, I guess, a clarification for the public, or is that we really have, we have the R and R hearing, which we already set, and this is just our hearing also regarding to our actual operating budget. And while there's a connection to the two, they are also separate in the sense that if you want to come to the R and R hearing and talk just about the revenue neutral issue, that's the one hearing, and this one is just general budget issues, concerns, ideas, and whatnot. So, I think you kind of made it, but I wanted to make that clear, because with R and R now, it gets a little confusing as to what each hearing actually is. So, thank you.
Other comments? Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. And, sorry, gentlemen, I didn't look at this, one of these exhibits, it's, I guess it's the thing that'll be published in the paper, and I guess, I'm trying to figure this out, there's something here that's can't be right, because it's saying for 2023 budget was 281 million, and next year, proposed budget's 403 million? Is it possible that it'd be that large of jump?
So, like I said, the way that we report to the state is a little bit different with our fund balances. So, you'll notice the general fund is much more than the $113 million that we've presented to the governing body through this process. That is because it includes all of the cash in the general fund as well. So, when we report to the state, it's because we have to include all of the cash balances. So, the majority of that is the utilities and general fund cash balances.
I'm sorry, Mr. Vaughn, let me apologize to you. You might have been saying that when I was sitting here trying to figure it out, and so I wasn't.
No apology necessary.
Wasn't listening to what you're saying, so that makes sense now. Thank you.
Further remarks, questions for Freddie or Adam? Is there a motion to entertain?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Emerson, second. Second by Councilwoman Hofer. Recall the roll, please.
Councilmembers Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
We lost our connection.
Yeah. Maybe they're offline.
Emerson?
Yes.
And Kell?
Yes.
And we have eight yes, with councilmembers Ortiz and Nager not voting. So, the motion carries.
We will now move to action item 4I.
I is approval of an amendment number one to City of Topeka contract 49773 with the International Association of Firefighters Local 83 concerning wages for the remainder of 2023 and 2024.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor and governing body, this is another union agreement that we were asked to reopen, and you approved, and we sat down and negotiated what I think is a good agreement for everybody all the way around, and it went pretty smooth, and I appreciate that from the union representatives that worked at the table with us, as well as our staff, and as well as our legal department also. And the fire chief will lead you through this.
Chief?
Thank you. Good evening. I would just add that I do want to thank the executive board of Local 83. They've been very patient as we've worked through this process. I think this agreement will help us remain competitive in the labor market as we continue to work to get back to full staff in the fire department. And I also think that any and all of these reopeners that the city has agreed to enter into is a positive sign for the city as a whole, as to what type of employer that we are, and the support that our workforce gets from the governing body. So, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Question for Chief? Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor?
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Dobler, second by Councilwoman Ortiz. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Oh, yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
And Nager. Okay, so we have nine yes, motion carries.
Okay. Nine yes, and we'll move on to the non-action items. Thank you, Chief. Brenda?
Is discussion related to the City of Topeka 2024 operating budget?
Mr. City Manager.
Well, I'm not probation, but I'm going to go ahead with the city manager's budget. So, Mayor and governing body, as you know, this is what it takes to run the city manager's office, which is directly intertwined with the governing body, and with the public, and with a number of other departments also. The budget, which is $907,280, is relatively the same for next year as it is this year. There may be about a 2% or 3% increase in there. And the city manager's office is the one appointed office that works directly with the public and works for you. Your only employee in this technicality is the city manager. So, in order for the city manager to work with the governing body, work with our citizens, and to help provide the leadership and the management of our city, that's what this office does. That's what this budget does, so.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Kell?
No, I see there's some performance measures at the bottom of that. Do you know when that information was gathered?
I do not.
Yeah, I can answer that question. So, those come from the 2021 citizen survey that we sent out. So, we're in talks of another citizen survey at some point in the future where we can continue collecting those performance measures.
What I do know, Councilmen, is it wasn't gathered since I've been here.
It's nice to see where we fall, like, especially the Department of the City Manager, and yes, the future polling of that would be great throughout the year to kind of gather information. I think it would be great to help us see where things are going.
So, you're put on notice, Richard. You're being put on notice, obviously.
I know. I may think of something later.
Now, we'll move to the operating budget. Yeah, Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. In the chart, there's a corresponding budget page on page 196. I know that there had been some council discussion, and that somewhere in the breadth of this whole 400 pages or whatever it is, there's a new provision for a deputy city manager position that's not filled, but to provide that as available in the future. In the org chart that's on page 196, there had been actually a number of new positions created over the last year. One of them was a fairly high-end position in the city manager's office. Is that position expected to continue also, or is that something we need to be looking at?
The deputy city manager is going to continue, because that is critical for you. We're working on a job description now, and what I hope to do is get that out and post that, and a couple of those positions will no longer be there when we get to the end of the road, because they're going to help fund that deputy director. And I, quite frankly, think there's a couple of positions in there that you don't need in the city manager's office, doesn't he?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Further questions? Remarks? Ready?
Mr. Mayor, so, continuing with the conversation regarding the budget, over the past few weeks, we have talked about the three outcomes that the governing body established as a priorities for the city, community appearance, growth, and housing. So, right now, we are discussing the operation side of the question. So, we talked about the three, now we have to talk about how the city operates. So, we started with the city manager's office, and I would like to continue with that to discuss two within the Department of Finance, which is, one, payroll, and two, the budget division. So, regarding payroll, regarding payroll, this is a division within the finance department that administered all the biweekly payroll for nearly 1,200 city employees. They track all their time, they track all their attendance, they maintain their records for their PTO or paytime off, and they manage the retirement system for all the city employees. So, for the goals for 2024, we have, the division and the department wants to navigate and successfully implement the new ERP system. They want to transition into file storage only. They want to put into service this earned wage access, and I can expand more on that. And they want to continue cross-training in order to be prepared for unforeseen emergencies, such as the one that we had during the COVID pandemic. So, in the performance measure, one is the percentage of time for the two-day standards for uploading the bank files. for uploading the bank files to the employees. And when you see the 96% and with a target of 100%, so there is almost no rate for failure for the City of Topeka to pay all the employees, not just on time, which would be a Friday, but to pay them ahead. So some community banks would be able to provide the funding to all the, to those individuals that participate within the community bank. And also, the performance measure is to maintain 100% record in all federal, state, and capers deposit submitted on time. So this is, once again, we, and the payroll division leaves almost no room to make mistakes because we understand the importance of paying every single member of the team on time. So that will be the payroll, and I will follow by the, do you want to? What's up? Okay, so Adam mentioned there's a new FTE for, for this department, for this division. And one of the reasoning was related to the typical workload. My team spends more than 14 hours additional every way, every week, weekly paid week. So I can totally see their, their workload increasing significantly and going back to normal, and it increases significantly and go back to normal. So that to me tells me that they are not, they don't have the capacity to manage all, all the payrolls with this 100% accuracy. So the best benefit for the team and for the members of the city is to provide an additional assistant, additional payroll clerk to support the FTE there, to support the current team so we can continue to maintain that 100% record. Now, I can speak about the budget. So the budget division is within also within the finance department, and they, the budget office is responsible for creating and implementing the budget, the CAP, and the strategic plan. So for the goals for 2024 is to continue year two or the significant improvement of this outcome-based budget. This was the first year, a significant change that we see. We want to continue to move with the process, improve it over time. And another, another goal for, for 2022 is to increase the budget-related community engagement. I think if you have any questions, we, we can expand on that. So for our performance measure, it's to continue the SMP bond rating at double eight, which is significantly high. And this is why when Rochelle comes and talks to you about rap bonds and geo-bonds, we can provide, or we receive a lot of bits and a good rate, too. And to keep the general fund as a percentage of total budget, is that right? Total budget at 20%. You can see that in 2021, it was 27, 2022 was 28%. So the target would be 20% as you previously mentioned.
Deputy Mayor has a question.
Please.
So Freddie, this is a performance-based budget, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're not. Not meeting the metrics for general fund as percent of total, right? How does, how does this budget address that?
Thank you for the question. So we will come to you at the end of the year with our surplus that we expect, and we'll come to you with a plan that we have to start spending down that reserve amount so that we can be closer to that 20% target.
But that's after we approve the budget, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, we'll discuss more. Thank you.
Proceed.
Thank you. So we'll, we'll backtrack just a little bit here. So, so on the city manager's page, I did want to mention a couple of the FTE changes. So there, there were two assistant to the city manager positions that were created after the 2023 budget. Those positions, as, as interim city manager mentioned, are now being converted into the deputy city manager position. Additionally, in the city manager's office contains the communications division and the city clerk division. And within our communications division, we've recently added our language access coordinator, which this position is to help the City of Topeka provide better service to its limited English proficient neighbors. So this is a position that with, with the assistance of DEI, again, is just there to be able to provide that additional assistance so that we can communicate everything that the city's going on. It's, it's been something that's been expressed by, by the council in the past, so we're, we've actively worked to address that with that FTE. And then within, within the finance department, as Freddie mentioned, there's payroll clerk. And then since we have originally sent out your FTE chart, we have since taken out the Director of Special Projects and Innovation position, but, but we still have that project manager position there that's there to support some additional projects. So with that, we'll go back to now inviting Judge Sedani up for, for our probation, where he, he, he can, sorry for the flip-flopping a little bit, so this is back on, a few slides back, but I'll, I'll turn it over to the judge to go over his, his department.
Your Honor. Good evening, everyone. Judge Sedani.
Mike's on. Now it's on. Here to just talk about a little bit of community appearance is what we tied the probation department to. As far as it's concerned, probation is vital to the criminal justice system in terms of what we do in our community rehabilitate, 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 whether it's helping people with mental health treatment, transition into housing, in some instances, transition back into society, coming straight out of custody. This year, we've had to modify things quite a bit with the addition of domestic battery. You'll see a request for a new probation officer position. Justification for that is we've had to dedicate one of our officers full-time to do simply domestic battery. I think I've tried to provide you some information about that in my weekly reports. That really strains the office, which is used to having three full-time officers to supervise everybody on non-domestic supervision. We've also had to add pre-trial supervision, which is nothing the city's done before. That means if you're out on bond, we're supervising you, see where you're at, what you're doing, your reporting, and that's strictly for domestic violence cases. Taken that pretty seriously. Had to do a lot of moving around and modifications to our dockets, but it's going really well. You'll see some of the highlights for 2223, the, the division or the department, rather, 146 pre-sentence investigations, 120 parties on supervised probation at the end of last year, graduated over 100 people from alcohol information school. So the reach in the community is there. I really appreciate the staff. Like Councilman Valdivia Akala, woman said, I mean, my staff is just as important as me, so I'd echo that sentiment. If you've got questions on other stuff, I'd gladly be here to answer them.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you, Judge, for the extra efforts that are being put in towards violence against women, most often. That's, that's who we know that the victims are, children and women. And I think that it, it's a really sad and rather scary commentary on how this is, you know, how we see the increase rather than the decrease. So I appreciate your work and support, your department in, in total for that and the needs that you have to make sure that our citizens, as much as we can under the, the rule of law, be protected and the services that you offer are greatly appreciated. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
If I could respond.
Yes, sir.
I, I appreciate that, and I'm not going to sit here. I'd be remiss not to talk about the legal department because prosecution has been as big a factor as the court. I mean, it's been hand in hand to make this happen, so I appreciate you saying that. YWCA has been a big part of this as well. They've been at all the proceedings. And, and I'll be frank with, with the body, I mean, things have turned up a notch at the court. We take people, more people to jail than ever before because if you miss court on a domestic case, it's a no-vaughn warrant. So, you know, we've put a security officer now at City Hall to help with probationers coming in, not only to prosecution, but also the probation department. So, you know, that's just kind of where we're at now.
Councilman Duncan, did you have something?
Nope, he addressed it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a procedural question because I am lost. You mentioned earlier that, if, if I may, and we can follow up later, but I thought today we were on the operations section. So I've been trying to work with the book and the handout that I got, and probation isn't in the operations section. It's in the first section that we did, how, I guess it's in community appearance. So can, can you help me with, are, are we shuffling stuff around after we printed? And I'm lost.
So sorry about that, Councilwoman. This is just a scheduling conflict, so Judge wasn't available last week, so we just moved him to this week and got lost at, at the beginning there a little bit, so so sorry about that.
Okay. And also, a, a couple minutes ago, before the judge came up, you mentioned having, since the book was printed, taken a position out?
That is correct. That we'll, we'll, we'll let you know in the next supplement where, where the positions have changed.
Okay, because it, this is kind of a big book anyway, so I'm just, any help that is really simple, that can help us find any changes, tell us whether the money is left over or whether it's been reprogrammed, so we have kind of a thumb on where we are with, with changes would be much appreciated.
Yeah, we will do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Judge, question for you and maybe for the city attorney as well. Does this budget adequately, adequately address your needs as far as municipal court, probation, and then I would throw prosecution in there, given the fact that we're now doing domestic violence cases?
Should I go first?
Go ahead, Stanley.
Sure. We'll jump ahead just slightly. In my budget, you will see a request for an additional paralegal, and that is directly related to domestic violence. And Judge is right, it's been a hand-in-hand partnership. I'll give a lot of credit to Bridget Markley in our office. She is our prosecutor that is devoted to domestic violence. During the pandemic, we saw a decrease in cases, so even though we had four budgeted FTE prosecutors, we did not fill that fourth spot as an effort to help the taxpayers, and if you don't need it, you don't fill it. Domestic violence has forced us to fill that fourth spot. It's absolutely needed. However, I do need the addition of a paralegal. There was estimated about 1,000 cases a year not going prosecuted when we started prosecuting this. As Judge talked about, these are high-intense cases, they've required additional dockets. That additional paralegal will be pretty crucial to my department's ability to continue doing this.
Similarly, at this, at this point, Councilman, I think the request for probation is, is a need, and I think where we're at with the numbers, I think it'll satisfy what we're doing. And next year, if we need to reevaluate with another court position, you know, I'll, I'll make that request.
Very good. Thank you.
City Manager.
So I want to commend the city attorney and the judge and use the governing body to fund aggressively prosecuting domestic violence. It is a, it is a crisis in our civilization. It is a crisis in our town, your neighbors, your family. You likely know somebody that suffers from domestic violence, and it's a sad thing that we have to say we need more money to do prosecutions, but if we, if we don't do the prosecutions, if we don't try to get people turned around, then it would be even worse, and the police would see, they see a lot of it as a final product anyway. But we would have more issues on the street with our law enforcement if we didn't aggressively
Judge, what's the caseload for your probation officers about? How many cases are they carrying?
Oh, I, I think approximately probably over 100 defendants on supervision a month.
Wow.
And probably with the addition of domestic, we've added 10 to 15 bond supervision defendants. So we've got a lot of people coming and going from that office.
Okay, so to follow up with Deputy Mayor, just want to make sure that, that your effort is just, is sufficiently supported with staffing that's necessary and not, not just getting by, but that we're really on top of it. And so I support any efforts that your office does in collaboration with the city attorney and the prosecutor, prosecution's office to keep that caseload so it's manageable so that we don't lose track of the people that we're trying to get to do the right thing in the city. So thank you for your efforts, sir.
I appreciate that, sir. And, and I think, again, Topeka Police Department and the role they've played along with the, the, you know, the team, teaming up with the prosecution office and dedicating, I don't know if it's a captain or a major, just to domestic violence and making sure there's nothing uncovered has also been vital to this, so I appreciate it. I, I agree with everybody, this is important. It's important work. We've, like Ms. Stanley said, we've created a new docket, created a pre-trial docket, so things are going well.
Good. Thank you. Good to hear. Further comments or questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, good to see you. Couldn't see her up in the corner there. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Your Honor, I just want to ask, I'm concerned about the mental health court. If you, if you're losing positions, and I'm not saying, you're doing a fabulous job on domestic violence, but where are we at on mental health? Do the, do the two go hand in hand? Because I see that we're getting more in that court. Are we still doing mental health court?
That's a good question, yes. Our alternative sentencing court is very vibrant. It's, it's one of the pages in this budget book. Every Wednesday afternoon, we do that, partnership with Valeo, our probation officer, again, prosecution. It's, it's full steam ahead on that. Graduates, you know, once a month, twice a month. Pretty soon, we'll get with communications and we'll put out a, an ASC sort of video and hopefully have some interviews and just show the impact of the program. So we do have some domestic violence defendants that have been referred over to the alternative sentencing court, either as a condition if they want to do a diversion or a condition of probation. So yes, they are hand in hand, and mental health is, is the top of my priority list.
Well, are we fully staffed to handle both? Because I can see them, if they're not at the same level, I can see them, mental health being, I, I mean, I can see one of them overlapping. I just want to make sure that you have the proper tools to do that, what needs to be done, so that we're not suffering when we, when we bring them to this area.
I appreciate that. I, I mean, I want to knock on something. I don't think this is wood, but we, we came through some dark times here in the last couple years with staffing, and the court at this point is, is almost there. I think we may be one short, so we're, we're going to take it while we can get it, and this is our first year of domestic, and I'm sure as the issues get deeper and we see how things are going to play out, I'll, I'll make the appropriate requests and talk to you guys about our needs.
Well, I, I hope that you feel comfortable in doing that. Don't, don't feel like you can't. Thank you, and thank you for, for all that you do.
I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
So I'll actually ask a question that's an extension of, of the alternative sentencing sentencing court, and this is a much longer conversation we don't need to have now, but it gives me a general idea of other issues we're looking at, whether it's criminal activity, whether it's the homelessness issue that we're, we're trying to wrap our heads around, whether it's the domestic violence issue. Your, your court is just one piece of what happens to those individuals. Do your folks have any idea or could help us in those other conversations of where the gap is? In other words, they get to your court, you know where they need to go from there, and sometimes they can get there and sometimes they can't because the resource is not available. Do we track any of that or have some general sense as we look at those other, where we can talk to you and your folks and say, okay, as we're looking at where we're putting resources to deal with those problems, you guys may have some insight into where those actual gaps to get people help are because you're trying to connect? So hopefully that makes some sense, but again, that's why it's a deeper conversation, but is it worthwhile to have with your folks to get a better idea of where those resources are needed?
I, I think in general, I'm probably the one guy along with Judge LeBlanc that has probably a direct relationship with a lot of our homeless that tend to commit crimes, whether they're minor disorderly or criminal trespass or more severe person crimes like battery or, battery at law enforcement or assault. So yes, I think that, I gladly entertain that conversation. We that conversation. We try to rehabilitate through probation. At some point, you've been eight cases deep just in 2023, probation is just not going to work. So you guys are going to see the impact on the jail bill monthly because that's going to go up. It's $96 a day now to house an inmate. But yes, I'd love to have that conversation.
Great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vadiyakala.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is turning into a really broad conversation here. But now that it's been brought up, as we're talking about mental health, as we're talking about strained resources at times, as we're talking about, hopefully you guys will be involved, I need to relook at the core group for the strategy that we're trying to do for the unsheltered. And I hope somebody from your staff obviously is on the core group because your data is definitely needed. But I think that one thing is, we have these conversations, we also need to include that the mental health services are so strained, the jails are so strained, Larnard, Osawatomi are so strained, that we have to be honest in this dialogue on how much mental health is oozing out. And actually, the untreated or unjailed, for those that commit crimes at any number of levels, all the way up to felony, are in our communities because of any number of these issues that all intersect in the most frustrating of fashions. So I really hope that, you know, you guys, again, I need to relook at the core group team because this is all such a complex issue, like the number of issues that we have had in District Two about those that are unsheltered criminal mental health, and the way that many residents see it as kind of a revolving door. And so as we keep getting more and more immersed in the mental health crisis that we are in, these really transparent and needed dialogues, I would agree, as Councilman Duncan, you know, says, need to happen because then it gives us that better insight into what's happening in Topeka as a whole, and how much unchecked, due through no fault of our own, but strained systems, is actually out there. And the data is, City Manager and I keep talking about the unsheltered, mental health, everything else, data, data, data. Data is everything because it will help us then have a stronger case moving forward on whatever the dollar needs may be, or wherever we have to pivot in the way that we're handling any number of these crises. So that's just added dialogue. Thank you.
I appreciate you saying that. I mean, we're in the trenches down here, and whether it's municipal court staff or even someone from prosecution, they're on the ground as well. I'd love to provide someone from my department.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Thank you.
So with that, we will go back into operations, and we'll actually go to the legal department. A good segue, talking about some of those similar things. So I'll turn it back over to Amanda.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. In front of you is a slide that talks about the legal department's general government budget. As you know, the legal department is made up of three divisions. We have our general government division, our prosecution division, and our civil litigation division. As Adam reminds me, we're only focusing on some stuff, but I can mention other stuff. So our general government division, they are your general counsels of your city. We're the ones that review your contracts, do your negotiations, try to keep people out of trouble, try to get to yes when we can, open records, request bankruptcies, employment law, police negotiations, police advising, fire advising. All of your day-to-day stuff is what our general government division covers. Prosecution Division does all of your prosecution of all municipal offenses, as well as code cases. And then our civil litigation division does all of our litigation in defense of the city. We are currently fully staffed for about a month. Our longtime chief of litigation, Shelley Starr, retires in a month from yesterday. So we are actively trying to find a replacement litigator. She will be very hard to replace in the city, and litigators are very hard to find right now. So that is a big focus, is trying to make sure that we are fully staffed when she retires. Our budget is generally, for the most part, pretty flat from last year. And we did have some transfers of positions from other departments back into the legal department. One example is the police legal advisor reported to the city attorney, supervised by the city attorney, but sat in the police department's budget. We've moved that back over to the legal department budget. Seems to make more sense if there are attorney to live in the legal department's budget than the police department's budget. But that is not a new FTE. It's been an FTE in the budget for a long time. Then the other request for a new FTE is the, in prosecution, is for a paralegal to help with the domestic violence. And that will be pretty crucial moving forward to allow us to continue to only have four prosecutors. Without that addition of a paralegal, we'll either need to figure out another attorney or something else, and prosecutors are equally hard to find these days. So I am happy to stand for questions on anything you may have.
Thank you. Remarks, questions? Okay. Councilman Duncan.
So I really don't have a specific question for Amanda. I guess I have a something that's probably not going to happen in this year's budget, but if I don't lay the groundwork today, it may not happen tomorrow. I know that one of the most time-consuming things that our legal department has to deal with and that we fall in the hole is regarding our blighted properties, especially those properties that have been caught up in grandma died, somebody in Texas somehow owns it, they don't do anything with it, we're trying to track down how to hold them accountable, their estate away. It is a specialty. It is time-consuming, but it is something that is really needed if we actually want to attack at some point the real problem of getting those property owners being held more responsible and reclaiming those properties. I think at some point, we need to look at bringing in a specialized legal attorney who does that. I would like us to reach out to the county because they have some of the similar problems and see if we can't share that with them, that individual and cost with them long term, because I think it benefits both of us, especially since they do the tax sales, foreclosures. So again, I know that that will not be put in this budget, unlikely to be put in this budget this year, but I'd like to start laying some groundwork because it's a significant problem that we have, and it's something that is a huge time suck for legal, that takes away a lot of their resources. So thank you, Mayor.
All right. Anything further? Move forward.
Thank you. So the next one that we'll talk about is our IT budget. And so we have Randy Stahl up here that will go over that.
Good evening. So the section of the budget that we're presenting tonight is regarding our business systems. And for you, business systems really encompasses back-end support, kind of our data analytics piece, support for web applications and design. It's really all about maintenance and maintaining those systems. We are working on trying to migrate to Microsoft 365, which I know some of you are well aware of. We've had some delays in that process, and we're making some adjustments. So hopefully, we'll get moving on that sooner than later. And then our goal to try to, is to make some headway towards continuity of operations and business continuity for the governing body. You know, we've had some challenges with, I will say, reliability in my tenure of six months here. So I'm looking at opportunities to try to become more reliable, and then also evaluate our security, which is ever-changing in our world today. So that's what this mostly encompasses, is the personnel that support those business systems. And any questions you have, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Questions, remarks? Okay.
Thank you.
You got off easy.
That's because it's complicated.
Yeah.
So this afternoon, you received a PDF answering some of the questions from last week on recruitment. We thought it would be best to give you a little bit more time with that document and to push that recruitment discussion to next week, along with the benefits discussion. So next week will be our last scheduled budget presentation. It sounds like we'll want to prepare some stuff on fund balance as well. So we will do that before next week to give more concrete answers as to what our long-term plan is with the general fund, fund balance. So I guess our other question of the governing body is, is there anything else that you would like us to address or cover through the budget presentation next week?
Adam, are you asking for the governing body to forward that to you?
Yeah. So if you know tonight, you can let me know now, or just send me and Freddie an email and let us know what other topics that you would like to be covered for next week's budget presentation, which would be our last one before the September 5 budget hearing.
City Manager. Oh, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. I don't know where this would fit in, but I want us, me and my colleagues, to consider another zoning inspector. We only have one for the whole city of Topeka, and that's Megan Rowdenkamp. I have six zoning issues that are over a year old. She can't do it all by herself. And that's been like that for a while. And so I don't know where that fits in, or you haven't presented on that yet. Is that correct, Adam?
That is correct. And we can have conversation with the planning staff to walk through that.
Okay, okay. Because that's very, very, very crucial. You know, I have, I took our department head, as I always do on the ride through, and I pointed out, this has been like this 10 years. This is, you know, where are we at with this? And, you know, and I've got case after case. And, you know, I have some of my constituents that are going to other council members because they think I'm not doing anything. And it's very, very frustrating. You know, we've got to do more. She was on medical leave, and, you know, we didn't know that. Well, we knew that, but, you know, our constituents didn't know that, which delayed stuff. One person cannot do it all. I can't believe we have allowed this to happen. So I would like to see us get another one. I really believe we need another one. Because I'd like to close out some of these issues that continue to be pushed down the road a little bit longer, pushed down the road a little bit longer. And even when she cites them, she's got to go back and the whole nine yards. But it's taken us a long, long time.
Councilwoman, Director Friedman is at the table. Do you have some information you can share with this director?
Yes, yeah. Councilwoman Ortiz, I would just share that. It's my understanding that before COVID, I believe we had two zoning inspectors. And then throughout that period, we were cut back to just one. So now it's just Megan that's doing that. And it is very time-consuming, consuming these zoning cases. And it requires multiple visits, and I completely understand and think that the drive-through that we went on together was good to give me some perspective and understand her workload. And I'll certainly work with finance to see if that's something that we can work to add as well.
Councilwoman Vadiyakala.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that what Councilwoman Ortiz is saying is absolutely spot-on. I don't know, obviously, I wasn't on point with it. But because of the zoning issues that happened in District Two, I know Megan tries as hard as she can, but she's only, again, one person. The thing is, this directly impacts community appearance as well. I also think that getting these cases moved through more aggressively in court with perhaps having two people on board rather than one would help. I would imagine, though, that is, and I don't know if you can verify this, so say that there's a zoning issue, and it's, you know, folks that can't afford to do what they need to do to clean up because, you know, say they're doing what they're not supposed to be doing in their backyard or whatever, and it's a zoning issue, and they don't have the means to afford any kind of change or rectifying the situation, would that be something, too, that the housing navigator gets involved in? Is that her realm as well, in addition to code enforcement? Also zoning violations that end up going to court?
Yeah, absolutely. So the housing navigator, and then certainly Irma and her position as a navigator working with code, they would all work together to figure out if there's a situation where somebody doesn't have the financial means to fix a problem, that we would try to work with them to problem solve for solutions, to find funds to help support.
So I think Irma's the busy woman of the city these days.
She is.
Because she's getting a lot on her plate. But I would support, too, an added position because we know that there's a lot of zoning challenges, as well as code enforcement challenges that we have. I mean, I do in my district. And this can help move things along, especially as we're looking at not only these three priorities, the change in our culture, property maintenance, you know, trying to get things up to a level where folks understand, while there may be somebody knocking on their door or saying, you know, something needs to be addressed, that we also have that strong component that is willing to help them find the services that they need. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick things. First is, we, I don't believe this person's been replaced. We lost our grants administrator. Don't believe we filled that position. But is it still in this budget? Is that position still?
Yes, we actually just posted that position just a day or two ago.
Okay, good. Just want to make sure that we weren't cutting that out. We've kind of gone back and forth on that one through the years. The second thing is, since we're getting down to a month, and next week's the last presentation before we get into deep discussion, I'll say what Freddie and Adam already heard me say, and I'll say it for everybody else. No shocker, I would really like to see a budget with a mill levy decrease. But I also know, just one vote, they only need six, right? And that's okay. But assuming that, as we've already stated, an intent to go above the revenue neutral rate, we can still, I believe, decrease the mill levy, still bring in more revenue, and take care of our costs. But what I've presented to Freddie and Adam is, as they look at and bring forward that, how we're going to deal with the reserves, we have multiple things within this budget that are one-time expenses. And if we remove those and pay for those both upfront with cash and get them off the, get them taken care of with some of those reserve funds that we're willing to spend, we can also do that and simultaneously offer some sort of property tax relief through that mill levy decrease. So I would like to see that. They already know that. We've had that discussion a few times. Whether it happens or not, that's fine. But I at least wanted to put my desire out into the public as they're working on that stuff. So thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. This is kind of a shout out to any of the staff and interim city manager. I think Councilwoman Ortiz brings up a good example. I think all of us are aware that there were a number of new positions created in the last year, some of which we didn't even know about and didn't know what they were doing. You know, any feedback from you all on that is just helpful for us to evaluate retaining versus letting go a position. But also, even before the last year or so, for instance, the department that used to be Neighborhood Relations was broken up into three different departments. And code went into police, and community engagement went into the city manager's office, and now is in DEI, and housing went into planning. A lot of cities, and so it's fractured. We've started to add these navigator positions, but using the zoning inspector, we really have only had one, as long as I can remember. But there really are two sides to that zoning inspector. One is the cases that seem to go pretty steadily through Planning Commission, where somebody wants to develop or redevelop a piece of property. And the other half of that position is the sign ordinance and people who just are working on cars in their backyard and they're out of, or have a home business or something, and they're out of compliance. And it sounds like some of those are maybe the ones that are taking some time because we're trying to be the kinder and gentler government. But I wonder if, you know, we know that, for instance, code property maintenance code unit does the whole international property maintenance code, but somehow just kind of winging off to the side, it's the engineering department that's supposed to write up sidewalks that are uneven and give people citations and work that out. You know, if there was some, it seems that that's some thought, even though right now can seem a little chaotic, to kind of restructuring the like services that involve people that have existing properties and issues, so that maybe one inspector, police or fire and code, for instance, are partnering on going out to apartment buildings now. I mean, looking at ways that maybe we can split some of those duties to be more effective and more efficient while we're trying to, as I have described it, pull all these kites in by the tail, you know, that we're aware of, to do these efficiencies and have better outcomes. If those kinds of thoughts have been underway, it, you know, without it going too far, I think we're all feeling like we all need to be part of the brainstorming for how to restructure and kind of settle all those things. And so I am eager for feedback, if you all have been thinking about some things. And I think we'll try and contribute, too, if we've seen things like a central code inspection or whatever. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll move on. Adam?
So our last reminder, this Thursday, from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM, we will be doing our public engagement session at the library, so invite anyone to come out and to learn more and ask questions about the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We're done with this. Oh, city manager, yes.
So, Councilwoman Hiller, I think that was, that's an important discussion to have, but I will tell you, on the inspector, you can't have too many inspectors, and you don't have too many inspectors now, and you do need another inspector. Now, two, that would be 100% increase if you want the two, and I will tell you that the work is still out there for that inspector to do. So unless there's an objection, I will direct finance to put a second inspector in the budget for you to consider.
City manager, you and I have talked before about putting our resources at the root of our, some of our issues, and this is one that we kind of talked about with regards to how we invest in code and zoning so that they are an effective unit with the police department in addressing some of these issues. So I certainly would support that suggestion of adding yet another inspector to the budget. I won't speak for the entire body, but I certainly would support it.
Thank you. I, yes.
Councilwoman Valdivia.
Thank you. Thank you for not speaking for all of us, Mayor. It's appreciated here. So, and just wanted to say thank you for that, because I definitely support that. Thank you, city manager.
And I think if you support that, that there are other conversations we can have about how to increase the efficiencies of this and have cross-department assistance. And you'd be surprised at the assistance we have now. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala and her husband and myself went out to a site where there were multiple departments helping clean up an abandoned homeless camp that had been there quite a while. The reason we knew about it is because the owner of the salvage yard told our people about it. But, I mean, it, it takes three pieces of equipment, maybe four, and you have about 20 employees out there, and I think there were, what, three different departments represented? So there's a lot of cross-action that takes place, but thank you very much for the support.
Okay. Adam? Freddie, thank you very much. We'll move on now. Oh, there's somebody else. Sylvia? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will support it. I tell you what, Megan has been a huge asset, because she was a code enforcer before she came to zoning. And so what the problems I used to have with zoning before was, they would say, well, that's not our area, that's code. And code would say, no, that's zoning, and it'd go back and forth. Well, Megan knows code, and so she's able to jump right on it and get the proper people out there, but she's only one person, one person. So, yes, I, I highly recommend one or two.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay? All right. We'll move on now to public comment. We have a number of people signed up. I believe some may have left the gallery, and I'll call their names. William Brandlin. William Brandlin. I know the gentleman's not here. Don Sloyer. Ralph Anderson. Mr. Anderson? Remind everybody, you have four minutes. The green light tells you when to start, yellow light tells you if you've got one minute left, and the red light, your time is up. Okay? Thank you, sir. Start when you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the city council and the citizens of Topeka. I've noted and applaud the reactive efforts of citizens, the city and county officials, organizations like Boyo, Topeka Rescue Mission, Justice Unity Ministry Project, Corinstone Topeka and others, along with the homeless that just want to have homes again, to help with our unsheltered problems. There's a second problem that can only add to the homeless problem, though, that needs to be addressed. That is a problem of some property owners and management companies, which can lead to more citizens joining the ranks of the homeless. The owners of manager, management companies are raising the rents while not using the monies to improve or maintain the safety, excuse me, maintain the safety and security of their properties. I mean, an increase of $20 to $30 a month, or $40 a month, that's not bad, but when they suddenly raise it $60 to $75, some people on fixed incomes just can't deal with that. This is leading to people looking for alternative living arrangements, sometimes in Topeka and sometimes elsewhere. Some of these people will be driven to the streets and homelessness due to financial challenges, mental breakdowns, and desperation. We need the city officials and everyone else to be proactive on this problem, to reduce our future homeless population growing faster than the present solutions can handle. I'm asking you all to stop the endless talking of reactive measures and start taking some proactive measures, please. Thank you all. God bless.
Thank you, sir. Deborah Vance.
Good evening.
My name is Deborah Vance, and I'm a member of the Topeka Justice Unity and Ministry Project JUMP. Once again, we are here to continue to implore you to, continue, once again, we are here to continue to implore you all to move forward with the next step in utilizing the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, to call together the Affordable Housing Review Committee so they can begin issuing requests for proposals to housing developers. Over the last seven meetings, JUMP members have been voicing our urgent plea to convene the review committee to use Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Yet this critical step that can alleviate the housing crisis remains untaken. Affordable housing is not just an issue, it is a fundamental human right. Every member of our community deserves a safe and stable place to call home, regardless of their income or socioeconomic status. However, the rising cost of housing continues to reach alarming levels, making it increasingly difficult for many hard-working families and individuals to find an affordable place to live. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund still represents an invaluable resource that has the potential to address this crisis head-on. By activating the fund and convening, convening the review committee, we can channel the necessary resource to create more affordable housing options for those in need. This is not a forefetched dream. It is a practical solution. We have the power to implement. We understand that the city has several important housing tools, such as the RHID program and the land bank. But if we want to ensure that the homelessness crisis doesn't continue to get worse than Topeka, we need to begin utilizing every tool at our disposal, especially the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. What our community truly needs is more affordable housing units, and we can provide that now. The worsening nature of unsheltered crisis in Topeka makes that increasingly clear. JUMP has a seat on the Affordable Housing Review Committee, and we will continue to encourage the governing body to move forward with this step. Thank you.
And I can see Mr. Pavaric on the horizon. It's kind of hard to miss you, sir. You're next on the list.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Governing Body, City Manager. By the way, City Manager, thank you for being here in Topeka with us right now. I also want to just give a shout out to how great the city staff is, and want to just publicly acknowledge them and thank them for the work that they do. I will say, I, I did think that Freddie was a little bit more interesting when he was giving reports across the street, but it's still nice to hear from him. I'm here, and speaking of staff, I also want to acknowledge that some of my teammates are, are in the audience. Matt Pavaric with the Greater Topeka Partnership. We have Ashley Gilfillan from Downtown Topeka Incorporated and the Riverfront Board. Bob Ross, our marketing communications guru. Glenda Washington, our equity officer. Michelle Quevins Stubblefield, our strategy officer. Molly Howey with Go Topeka. Stephanie Moran, our innovation leader. And Sean Dixon with Visit Topeka. I'm actually here today just to give you guys a message, and it's a message of appreciation. I want to tell you how much I and we, as a team, appreciate you. It's, it's courageous to run for office. It's not easy. You put your name out there, and you put your reputation out there. You do it to represent our citizens. You do it to represent your district. You do it to represent your city. That's probably the most important thing. You're courageous and making very difficult decisions, and it's always easy to be courageous when we're cutting ribbons and we're having a good time and we're making good announcements, but sometimes it's not as easy to be courageous and make hard decisions. I, I did a little math just today on the back of a napkin, and I know how hard you all work, and I know how many hours you put in. Most people don't. And the math I did is, I think a few of you might be making less than $5 an hour for the work that you do for our city, and I know you're not doing it for money. I've actually been, quite a study recently of the word "community." I've been digging into the word "community," and you can find a lot of different breakdowns on that community, but if you go down to the Latin roots of that word, what you find is "com" actually means "together." It's, it's, the root word is "together." And, and unity actually is "together," but it's actually "together" on a deeper level. And then "unis" or "uni," or we all play that game called "uno," means "one." So think about that. Community is together as one. So I want to just tell you how much I appreciate you all, and also want to kind of put a, a charge out to the community, and the charge is, is that it's time for unity. It's hard, like I said, it's hard when things are going great. It's a little bit more difficult when they're tough. I mean, things like we've talked about tonight, homelessness. We've talked a little bit about childcare and housing and, and Heartland Park and Topeka Hotel, things like that. So as we navigate these tough issues, I want to just ask you, unity, we don't have to agree, but we have, do have to work together. We need to show civility. Our differences make us stronger. I want us to be caring, respectful, have each other's backs. The competition isn't one another. The competition is far, far away. It's cities and other states and other countries. So I just want to thank you again, and, and just put a challenge out for us all to have unity so that we can solve these problems together. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Hey. Moving on from public comment, move to announcements. Brenda?
Okay. On the August 22nd agenda, we will have one presentation, we will have a noise exception, and we will have one professional services contract with Alfred Benish and Company. On the action items, we'll have a public hearing and ordinance for the East, or the establishment of the East Gate subdivision, number 4 RHID. And then we will have three resolutions coming out of the Public Infrastructure Committee for approval, one relating to the 2023 firm program fire station alerting project, the 2024 CIP project approvals, and then the Southwest Auburn Road to 29th to K4 highway improvements. Discussions include the operating budget and then unlawful camping ordinances.
Thank you. City manager?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Hiller?
Just encourage everybody to, want to thank everybody for all the things that you all have been doing and that we've been doing. Lots of ribbon cuttings, lots of public events. We, we had the first India Mela on the plaza last weekend, and it was phenomenal and packed, as the other ones have been. So thanks for everybody that's helped support them and, and that's put them on. So just for fun, wanted to put another event on your calendar on Saturday evening, the 28th of August. Topeka United will be doing its fourth annual Get Down in T-Town on a stage in front of the Brown v. Board mural. Headliner will be Roger Ortega. We've got a super action-packed, multicultural set of entertainers, as well as an array of food trucks. Easy to just check Topeka United on your Facebook page and get the whole layout. Happy to send you any information as well, and encourage the public to come. It's free, community-wide event. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Valdivia.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to bring up the horrific fires that have been taking place in Hawaii, prayers and much support in, in healing to those that, and to the land that has been so decimated. Also, wanted to let folks know that, do gardening and community gardens and just the general public, peanuts have been successful at the Oakland Garden. We planted six plants. We had about 10 people gathered round on Saturday and lifted them up and saw all the peanuts dangling with the dirt kind of kicking off of them. We have them drying now. It is so absolutely wonderful to know that we can grow peanuts in Oakland, so we're going to, I know that's not, okay, well, wait. At the National Night Out, Chief, I don't know where Chief is. There he is, back there. Okay. We were talking gardens, and so I told Chief that we were going to have to give him a tour of the Oakland Gardens, then he started talking about his garden, and I said, well, your garden is not as good as our garden. So we still have to give you that tour, Chief, but it is so exciting to know that we can do that, and we're hoping to have at least 10 to 15 times more the amount of peanuts next season than, than we do this season. And, and just thankful for all the people that wanted to take turns with the shovel and digging it up and then watching the peanuts dangling. It was, it was such an experience. And finally, for my oldest grandchild, Adrian Michael Lehman, whose birthday is tomorrow, he turned six years old, oh, six years old, 16 years old. I wish he was six years old. I still wish, I wish he was six years old. And he's a student at Topeka West. Just want to give him a big shout out and to his mom and his sister. Mijo, we love you siempre, so thank you.
You know, in Oakland, you can grow anything. That, that, all you got to do is throw a seed down, and it'll pop up. That ground over there is crazy.
Councilman Emerson. Oh, Councilwoman Ortiz. He's taking your seat over here, Councilwoman.
He's trying to take my place, but I will handle that. I want to say good evening to Rita. I hope that she's feeling better. I can't believe her husband didn't chime in and say something about that, but I hope she's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make it right with him. I hope she's feeling better, and we're still praying for her. I'd also like to say hi to two of my other favorite people, Mr. and Mrs. Tuck Duncan, who rescued me a few weeks about ago. Somebody on the board said that was his attorney. Well, that's my attorney. Let me make that clear. And then on a serious note, we had a tragedy on Sunday, and I want to send condolences to Mother Lois Brown's family. She was one of my constituents, and I'm sure there'll be more discussion on, on, on the mentally ill and... ill and mental health and in that, that several of us have been talking along. I spoke with the chief today. We all deal with it in some sort of fashion or form, and I think it's just something that we just, we need to come together and talk about it. You know, for so long, and even today, we just deal with it, and it's part of the norm. But in these times, it's not part of the norm anymore, and that's, that's all I'll say. So just ask your prayers for their family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman, okay, Councilwoman Cal?
Well, Councilwoman Hiller stole my thunder on the Get Down in T-Town, but highly recommend getting it out and seeing Roger Ortega born and raised in Topeka, then moved to New York and New Jersey, and recently moved back, and has an amazing song called "Back to Kansas." And for anyone that's moved away and then moved back home, it's a, it's a very relatable song. And I heard it last year at an event at T-PAC, and amazing artist. Also, as we said last week, you know, kids are getting back to school, make sure you're watching out for them, but also start looking at the calendars for events at your, at the local schools, your kid's school, your alma mater, and support your schools and getting out, support the bands, the athletics, the drama, whatever it is. Just look at the school calendars, see what's out there, and get out and support our local schools. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. I usually have no comments or short comments, so I, you know, you kind of accumulate that time and then you spend some time. So I'm going to do that tonight, not a lot of time. You know, we heard last week from the bike group, the Caw Valley Bike Group, about dangers on the trails from the unsheltered. I've had it, I've had a lot of emails, a lot of contacts this week. I've heard more stories about similar situations that fortunately didn't lead to somebody being injured, but certainly could have. You know, I got to thinking about this, which is sometimes a little bit dangerous. A couple of years ago, we had this whole issue of panhandling at intersections. And legally, we couldn't just prohibit panhandling, we had to tie it to a safety issue, which we did. We designated certain intersections because of traffic counts or something and made it illegal at those intersections to panhandle. So I'm going to suggest that we can similarly address the issues on the trails as safety issues. And, you know, I think about that a little bit. You're driving down the road, you're in your car, you might see things that you don't want to see, but it's difficult for people to obviously attack you when you're in a car. If you're on foot or on a bicycle, it's a different story. So, City Attorney, be prepared to cringe here. I'm going to propose, I'm going to ask the City Attorney, I guess, to draft an ordinance and work out all the legal, legal language, if you would. But basically, what I would like it to say is, due to safety considerations on public trails and sidewalks, because we have so many intertwined trails and sidewalks, that we pass an ordinance that basically says no camping on public property within, pick a number, I'm going to say 500 to start the discussion, 500 feet of the center line of any public trail or sidewalk. So again, that's no camping on public property. We can't control the private property within some reasonable measurement of the center line of any public trail or sidewalk in the city of Topeka. I'll channel my inner Spencer Duncan. This is an idea. Obviously, it takes, takes a few votes to pass it. If anybody else wants to help sponsor that ordinance, I'd welcome that, that participation. Maybe everybody else thinks it's not worth it, but, you know, we had a mayor once, gosh, I forget his name. He had a favorite saying, Phil Bun, had a favorite saying, and it was, "You can do something or you can do nothing." So this is an attempt to start doing something. Let's start the conversation. Let's see where it goes. And I know we've got lots of initiatives and core groups and committees and studies, and this can all, all be discussed in those forums. I guess the, the other thing I'd like to point out, and I appreciate Matt Pavaric coming up and giving us some words of wisdom, I don't believe that the, the issue of the unsheltered is addressed in Momentum 2027. Matt is maybe a nod or, yeah. I would suggest that perhaps this is a great time to bring the resources of the Greater Topeka Partnership and all of the organizations that it encompasses to bear on the issue. So I guess I would just ask Matt if he and his folks could go back and take a look at the Momentum pillars and see if there's any opportunity to work this issue into that. We need every, every bit of horsepower that we can muster on this, on this issue. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few quick things here. Before I came here this evening, I went to a ribbon cutting for a new space for SLI. Most people know them as doing the Festival of Trees every year. The last couple of years, that's, those have been done at Fairlawn Plaza in a space there. They have now redone that space so that it will sort of permanently be the new home, not just of the Festival of Trees, but they've opened up a new community space. For those who don't know, they, they continue to help individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities on a daily basis. So they've got a new, new space in Fairlawn Plaza, so it's good to see them continue to expand throughout our community. And the second thing is, I guess if you want to either see me do well or get embarrassed one way or the other, tomorrow night at 5:30. My, I'm a graduate of Topeka West High School. I'm also a former member of their debate team. As they get ready for the debate season, they reached out to myself and Representative Tobias, we're not even going to try, Reverend Tobias, I say it every time, I get it different every time, he knows that. But we will be on the negative side while they will debate us on the affirmative side. The topic for this year for the debate season is universal basic income, so we will be trying to convince them why it's not a good idea. They'll be trying to convince us why it is a good idea, and hopefully we'll help that team prepare for the upcoming debate season. So it should be fun. I'm sure they'll talk really fast. The Reverend and I'll talk very slow, and we'll see how it goes. But that's 5:30 tomorrow night at the, at the library, so thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer? Nothing, okay. I don't have anything for this evening particularly. I just want to thank everybody's attention to the agenda and the decisions that they made tonight and carrying on what our responsibilities are for this governing body. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to, I want to apologize to Congressman, to Councilwoman Ortiz. Got carried away there. I guess that's your next job, but for being remiss about my wife. And I want to let you know that she is recovering, and she has been listening to our meeting all night, so I think, like I say, I think that's just so she can hear what I might say. But thank you for asking about her. She is feeling better. She, this has been a tough deal for her, so I've been a little bit concerned, but your concerns and your talking to her and your messages to her have helped, so thank you very much.
Okay, nothing further. There is a need for two executive sessions. If the City Attorney will read, please.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed one and a half hours to discuss matters related to one or more individual companies regarding a possible business dealing with the city, which will involve the discussion of financial affairs or trade secrets pursuant to 754319B4. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff may be needed to assist the governing body in its deliberations. Interim City Manager Neinstat and other staff he deems necessary.
You've heard the need for executive session and the motion. The move by Councilwoman Cal is our second. Second by Councilwoman Emerson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will recess, take a 10-minute recess before we resume our executive session. Thank you. Marcus? Okay, are we on? Okay, we've concluded our discussions in our first executive session. There is a need for a second. City Attorney, will you read, please?
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 40 minutes to discuss employer-employee negotiations relating to one or more unions as justified by 754319B3. The meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff are necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations. Acting City Manager, or interim City Manager Neinstat and other staff he deems necessary.
Okay, you've heard the need for second. There's a motion to approve by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilwoman Hofer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There she is. Okay, it's been brought to my attention that would this discussion take us beyond our 10 o'clock?
It would. That is a good catch, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Sidebar over here, brought it to my attention. So we probably should entertain a motion to exceed our 10 o'clock deadline.
Salute.
Okay, motion seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move forward into our second session. Okay, are we on? Okay, we've concluded our discussions in our first executive session. There is a need for a second. City Attorney, will you read, please?
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 40 minutes to discuss employer-employee negotiations relating to one or more unions as justified by 754319B3. The meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff are necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations. Acting City Manager, or interim City Manager Neinstat and other staff he deems necessary.
Okay, you've heard the need for second. There's a motion to approve by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilwoman Hofer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There she is. Okay, it's been brought to my attention that would this discussion take us beyond our 10 o'clock?
It would. That is a good catch, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Sidebar over here, brought it to my attention. So we probably should entertain a motion to exceed our 10 o'clock deadline.
Salute.
Okay, motion seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move forward into our second session. Okay, we've concluded our deliberations in the second executive committee. I got it right the first time. No action has been taken. No further business coming before this body. The meeting is adjourned.